Let me see. That wrote problem.
Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Harren, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington, at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. We do have a forum. Uh, next item is to approve the agenda. We do need to amend it in the Star system, the Star, if you would.
We need to add item nine B, the Virginia Department of Health is here to discuss a Homeland Security Grant.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. So we need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Hood made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Tipton, second. In discussion. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. The next item is to approve the minutes from May the fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and May the tenth. Uh, was everybody here on the tenth? There wasn't. Well, okay, we'll separate it then. On May the fourth, we need a motion to approve the amendments as presented to you from May the fourth. Do we have a motion?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Addington, seconds. In discussion. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. The minutes from May the tenth, uh, we, do we have a motion to approve those minutes as presented to you?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Harren made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Jeter, second. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed.
Stay.
Jeter, stay. And Mr. Bricky, stay. Thank you, guys. Next item is the sentence expression period, and I'll read this short statement. Sentence expression period is upon the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, in the county, and/or for what or the section you represent. The board mayor may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed that to speak, we do have one person that has. We have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business, and any action will be considered according to clause of expression. Mr. Borough Mayor is here, so Mr. Mayor, if you would. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Everybody's looking good. Um, I'm Borough Mayor, Mr. from Fairview, Rebecca. I'm here to represent our church, Fairview Apostolic. Um, address is six forty-seven, Teach Road Road. We've had an influx of kids in our, um, classrooms or lacking, and we've had a vision presented to us of a fellowship hall, and I've had David Gilbert down there to check the site out, and we've got his blessing on it. I'm just here to get y'all's blessing on leaving the, uh, building permits.
To fit, not to rent, is the fees, correct?
The fees.
Yeah. But then we have a few minutes.
Okay. All right.
Excellent. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Me.
Hi, how are you doing?
Good.
I have something that, if possible, if I can give to each one of the members, because I'm going to discuss it, and you guys will have a copy and understand a little bit better what I'm talking about.
Do a cite your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Kathleen Riley, and I'm off Copper Creek Road in Duckfield. And I think I have just enough for everybody. There's two separate packages, held together by the paperclip. It's a kind of give you a better understanding once I get to that subject.
Thank you.
Oh, what I'm talking about. Boy, I just had enough.
Perfect.
Okay. And first of all, good morning to everybody.
Good morning.
Uh, originally was going to be coming to the May board meeting, but on the way, I experienced a car problem, and I couldn't make it. So in a way, it probably was a blessing, because it gave me an opportunity to watch the meeting via YouTube, which I think is great. I have a couple items that I would like to discuss under this public comment, and hope to do this quickly. I had an appointment with the Equalization Board on March twenty-fifth at nine AM, and I met with Jack Compton, who requested assistance from Kathy Turner regarding my property assessment appeal. They both acted in a professional manner, reviewed my supporting documentation, and made adjustments to the proposed assessment to correct errors, uh, that was made by Wingate Associates. I was surprised to read in the April thirteenth edition of the Virginia Star newspaper, the entire Equalization Board was terminated by the Board of Supervisors after meeting in closed session on April sixth. I further read that all adjustments made to the proposed assessments by the Equalization Board would be voided, and those who met with them would have to make an appointment to appeal again to the next newly appointed Equalization Board. I feel that the termination of the entire Equalization Board was done incorrectly. If there were issues with just two members, those two members should have had an opportunity to meet with the Board of Supervisors to discuss the alleged allegations and give those two members an opportunity to explain their side. Basically, I felt that they were found guilty of allegations first without the presumption of innocent until proven guilty. The other Equalization Board members and one alternate that was remaining should have stepped in to continue the work of the Equalization Board, considering monies was already spent for them to receive the required training, plus their names were forwarded and already approved by Judge Kilgore and sworn in by the corporate court. I just have to wonder if there was more to this story. Because of the actions of the Board of Supervisors in terminating the Equalization Board, I requested a copy of the paperwork that was generated by Ms. Turner and Mr. Com- Compton regarding the adjustments to my proposed assessments for both my properties under the Freedom and Information Act. I followed the Rights of Responsibility Guidelines posted on the Scott County, Virginia website regarding FOIA requests. I sent Tina Say an email on May eighteenth at nine twenty-four AM requesting this information via FOIA. I received an email from Ms. Debbie Donnelly on the same day of two oh five PM informing me, Ms. Say, and I don't know if I'm saying her name right, forwarded my FOIA request to her. In this email, she stated the signed documents made by Jack Compton and Kathy Turner were not available. The prior Equalization Board was disbanded by the Board of Supervisors, and any changes that were made by them have been removed, and the values put back to what they were prior to the Equalization Board meeting. She further stated, "I will receive a letter sometime in the next few weeks to inform me of this information, which dates and times to make an appointment to appeal my assessment, and if further questions, to contact her." At three fifty-four PM, the same day of May eighteenth, I replied back to Ms. Donnelly's email stating her reason of not available was not acceptable to my FOIA request. I further explained in my email, "The documents were signed by Ms. Turner and Mr. Compton as members of the Equalization Board on behalf of Scott County and are considered official documents and must be retained in accordance with the municipal records retention schedule and must be available upon FOIA request prior to dissection." I then requested a copy of the documentation regarding the adjustments that Ms. Turner and Mr. Compton made to correct those, the errors that were made by Wingate, excuse me, for my proposed property assessment for both my properties. On Saturday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, I received via certified mail from the Commissioner of Revenue an envelope with the information I requested for my FOIA request, but I only received the information for one of my properties, not both. Regardless of whether the adjustments made by the prior Equalization Board will not be honored, this information should have been forthcoming in my first request, and I should not have been told it was not available. I should not have had to explain to Ms. Donnelly the documents I requested are indeed a public record, and I had every right to see the copy of any and all the documentation that was generated by Mr. Turner, by Ms. Turner and Mr. Compton. This documentation will enable me to compare the findings of adjustments, if any, from the new Equalization Board against the findings of adjustments from the terminated Equalization Board, and to see the degree of difference between the two boards, and request an explanation of why, if it is too far apart. With this being said, I feel it would be in the best interest of any and all individuals who met with the former Equalization Board to ask and make a FOIA request to get a copy of the documentation that was generated and signed by the member or members of the prior Equalization Board that generated an adjustment to your property assessment. This way, you also have an opportunity to make the comparison between the two boards. With many individuals being unhappy with the two thousand two proposed assessments they received, myself included, I did some research and randomly picked properties from the two thousand twenty-two proposed assessment list and compared them against the prior assessment period to see what changes were made, if any, and to what extent. I was surprised at my findings. Most properties' assessed values increased minimally or at a forty percent increase with significantly higher than forty percent. There were many with no changes and many that decreased. I found commercial properties that should have increased but stayed the same or decreased. If they did increase, it was minimal. How is that possible? Because commercial properties are usually worth more than a home, and because they generate income, shouldn't their property tax bill be higher? What you have in front of you, I have compiled a list of forty-seven commercial properties, with the majority that is on Jackson Street. My breakdown shows twenty-two properties that were assessed values decreased, with the highest decreasing at a hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. There were four that had no changes and twenty-one increases, with the little increases and with the highest at eighty-nine thousand two hundred. I also pulled twenty-nine other properties that were not commercial. My breakdown showed nine were assessed to forty percent and higher, and what was strange was those that were forty percent and higher were on Copper Creek Road, Teach Road, Boulder Road, and, yeah. So it just kind of was surprising that just the nine that I found that was forty percent and higher was in my area. So I, I don't understand why. And the highest on that area that was off of Boulder Road was at a hundred and ninety-seven percent increase. There were five changes. There were five with no changes. Three property values decreased with highest showing a twenty-five percent, and twelve property values increased at variable amounts that were well under twenty-seven percent. Based on my findings, I feel the appraisals conducted and presented by Wingate were not performed accurately or in a uniform manner that shows such drastic degrees of difference with properties that have the same qualities, along with too many decreases in values for commercial properties. I do have copies, which I provided you. A couple months back, and I've been going back and forth when I go down to Kingsport, I drive past Riverside Development, so somebody told me to go up that road, just to see what it was all about. And I was surprised to see this very large building at the very end of the road sitting empty, along with the rest of the property just vacant and undeveloped. From what I read, I did a little research on the internet, and what I read, the county purchased the great property that consisted of ninety-two acres for development with the intention to promote businesses into that area that ultimately would bring jobs to the area. Good idea, right? It would have been, but when you look at the cost to purchase the property, development of the property with water, sewer, power, et cetera, provide incentives for Teletech to come into the county, CDBG grant monies, these investments are in costly for the county and for the taxpayers, and it basically went south. Now, Teletech has moved into the way of remote hiring, left the facility, and left Scott County. The county is not receiving any tax revenue for this very large tract of prime industrial, ninety-two acres of land, because they own it. There are no signs promoting this property, that it is for sale or for potential businesses looking to move, move onto that property. All it has is just a sign that says Riverside, Scott County. It is a financial decision, decision such as this, that are not in the best interest of Scott, Scott County taxpayers. I read in the May eighteen, two thousand twenty-two edition of the Virginia Star, that the VOS faces a one point one million dollar shortfall in the fiscal twenty-three county budget. I want to state that I follow a budget for my personal expenses, just like the county, but I feel there may be a difference with my bu- my budget versus the county. I do not let my wants override my needs. Sure, it's great to say I want this, but do I need this, and how will I pay for it? The county needs to start reining in on their wants and asks, does the county really need this now, and just how will we pay for it? So I guess to meet the shortfall for the two thousand, the fiscal year twenty-three budget, it's just easier to get the needed money for the budget by raising the property assessed values. I just want to thank you for the time and letting me speak, and you guys have a great day and a nice afternoon.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? If not, we'll come out of this expression period, and, uh, the, uh, thank you, Mr. Manes, coming, and about your church, we're, we'll do something about this, I think. Anyway, you heard his description, what we're going to do down there, it's a fellowship type hall. Y'all going to do a school there, you think, Boroughs? Is that your intent, or actual?
No, we're going to renovate the basement of church.
Okay.
To make more room for this classroom.
Okay, I got you. All right. So anyway, that's for the, the fees to be waived by the Board of Supervisors, and I think that's, we usually do that, so we should be as you here today. Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Ms. Hood made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Mr. Bricky, second. In discussion. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Ms. Riley, thank you for coming. You didn't forget the presentation.
Thank you.
No doubt you did some legwork.
Yes, I did, and a lot of copying and a lot of printing.
I could tell that you did.
But it was something that needed to be addressed.
Okay. And we do thank you for coming, and we, most issues you discussed, we understand where you're coming from, but we'll get through this, uh, with the new board being appointed, and, uh, so the process, when we discussed all this, it was going to be an issue, you have to go through it again.
Yes.
So hopefully, you'll be treated fairly with the next board, and that is our, our content on this. But anyway, we had to go through some things. We didn't want to go through it, but we did, and so we do thank you for coming, and I think you did a good job. You did a great presentation.
Thank you very much.
You did a good job with it. All right, anything else? Anybody got any comments or anything? Okay. All right, the next item is a public hearing, and this is to receive, uh, comments on the amended orders to set the deadline for appeals and disposi- disposing of application of the Equalization Board. Ms. Starance, you want to discuss any vote?
The dates that we have, uh, for this public hearing would be, all applications to the Board of Equalization will need to be received by Friday, July eighth, two thousand twenty-two, and the hearings will end on Friday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. Okay, we are in the public hearing. We'll receive comments from anyone wanting to speak. Hearing none, we'll come out of the public hearing. Uh, we'll put this to a vote on, uh, on these orders. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
If you made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Say, a second? In discussion. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is a public hearing to amend the Scott County fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget. Amendments include appropriations of two hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred sixty-seven dollars through Fund One, refuse collections, seventy-six thousand seven hundred thirty dollars in Fund One grant money, and a hundred four thousand and seventeen dollars in a new fund for the Sheriff's Office, and a hundred forty-five thousand two hundred seventeen dollars in a new fund that had been received in various county departments since July first, two thousand twenty-one. Anything else, Ms. Starance, before we go into public hearing? That's pretty well signed today. We're in a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, uh, remanding the, the budget for this year? Hearing none, we come out of the public hearing. Need a motion?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Bricky, second. In discussion. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is item nine, to adopt the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two amended budget. We have to do that, so, uh...
We just did that.
No, we did, didn't we? And you said, next item is item?
Nine.
Nine B. That's what I was trying to do. Ms. Starance, should we go ahead and, uh...
Uh, we have the Virginia Department of Health here today to discuss the Homeland Security Grant, so I think I want to...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Darren Rowe. I'm with the Virginia Department of Health, I am the Public Health Administration Coordinator. What we're doing is expanding, let me just read it to you, it makes a little more sense. We're trying to submit a regional proposal for funding under the two thousand twenty-two Homeland Security Grant program. This is to expand the capabilities to provide rapid medication administration to individuals exposed to chemical nerve agents, organophosphates within far southwest Virginia. This request funding will be augmented through CDC to manage chemback resources within the region. If funding is awarded, the funding will expand regional capabilities and be managed independently from the CDC chemback program. In other words, these are called duodocats, and what we'll do in Scott County is recognize a EMS station in this area and put a kit there for rapid use, if, if, if needed. Hopefully not, but if so, we have that application there available. What we're trying to do is provide a letter of support from each county in far southwest, hence Scott, that you will support this. It's just a grant. What we're looking at right now is four to five years, and then we'll reevaluate the sustainability at that time, because it, if it were a needed resource. But what we're doing is, I think Ms. Starance has got a letter already proposed. This, this needs your blessings on it, that this is what we're trying to do.
That is in your extra package.
Speaker, last name?
R O W E.
Well, that's a W, Al, so anyway, you got it in there now.
That's okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
All right, any comments or questions for Mr. Rowe?
I think we've always real, felt real safe in Scott County, and I hate to see this coming, but I think it's something we need to take a very serious look at.
Any other comments? All right, we need a motion. This letter of support that is requested from the Board of Supervisors, do we have a motion to do that?
I'll move.
If you made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
Bricky, second. In discussion. All fair and proper, say an aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Starance, get a quick turnaround on that, listen.
I'll get it to you in a second.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item is Mo, the architects, uh, uh, presenting the courthouse stuff, if you would. Uh, come.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dingus is going to bring up a PowerPoint presentation.
Do a cite your name directly.
Yes, sir. I'm Tony Bell with Mosley Architects X. We've been hired as your consultant partner on the courthouse facility spacing needs and the facilities master plan. We're here to present the hundred percent report this morning. I very much appreciate your time. Um, I think Ms. Starance has shared with you, this would take about an hour. My goal is, we're to be about half that, but then answer any questions you might have. Um, I realize that this is a lot of information we'll be sharing today, um, some large numbers, but, you know, we're here to act as your agent, to act as your partner, and to assist you in terms of making decisions to move forward. So without any further ado, was there any questions, Mr. Chairman, before we get started?
Not at all.
Okay. So, an agenda, we're going to go through some introductions. Once again, let you, uh, be aware of who is on our team. Walk through the space needs summary we've delivered previously. Uh, walk through some critical findings. Uh, we touched base with the Scott County Historical and Genealogical Society, and we'll yield those results. We'll run through caseload projections, that's the number of cases, commenced cases that the three different courts have on the record. Um, we'll walk through some site characteristics of your existing properties. Um, we'll look at an existing building assessment. For those of you who haven't walked through the, uh, facilities recently, that is the existing historic courthouse, what we'll call the courthouse annex, which is the judges' chamber building that sits to the right there on Jackson, and then the historic jail, and the, uh, more current jail that are behind the existing courthouse. Um, we'll look at some proposed options and construction cost estimates, and then lastly, we'll summarize with a project schedule. So the project team consists of mostly architects. I serve as managing principal. We have a civil engineer on the team, Hurd and Profit, out of Pittsburgh, and Downey and Scott served as our construction cost estimator. So the real, really the most important members of our team are you and your staff and your court stakeholders. So we touched base with all the different judges, all the different clerks, the Commonwealth's Attorney, the Sheriff's Office, Scott Services, um, Jane, your Court Services unit. All of these folks had impact and input on what you're going to see today. So the space needs assessment, I realize this is very small, but I'll, I'll summarize briefly. The, the total square footage that you occupy currently on your court complex campus is about twenty-one thousand square feet. Based on the courthouse facility guidelines, the twenty-year need is about sixty-five thousand square feet. That's the bottom right corner number, Mr. Mann. So we've got a pretty big space deficiency, okay? What have you been doing up to this point? You've been doing the best you can. Um, you've been renovating space, you've been turning, uh, storage closets into offices, you've been turning, um, storage rooms into hearing rooms and courtrooms. So been doing a great job maintaining the buildings, been doing a great job renovating the buildings to try to maintain the most safe and secure facilities that you can. So in addition to that deficit of space, there were some other critical findings. Number one was, Scott County Courts have petitioned the Supreme Court of Virginia to split the district court clerks. Right now, you've had, you have what's referred to as a combined court clerk. The two district clerks, that is, the J and DR and the general district clerk, are combined into one court clerk's office. Moving forward, they just, they have determined it would be in their best interest and the county citizen's best interest to split those two functions, okay? That is not uncommon. It's happening throughout the common law. There are only but a handful of courts who are still working under a combined clerk's, um, operational methodology. So that's finding number two. Uh, there's several areas within the court facility that are not accessible. What do I mean by not accessible? Not in accordance with the American with Disabilities Act. And that doesn't necessarily just mean wheelchair. That has to do with other, um, accessibility issues as well. So it's the duty, obviously, of the county to provide an accessible courthouse and accessible court facilities, uh, for the citizens. Point number four, toilet facilities and break rooms for the public and staff are insufficient, there's insufficient quantity and insufficient access to get to those toilet facilities. There's no secure parking for judges and constitutional officers. In accordance with Virginia Courthouse Facility Guidelines, that should be provided. Uh, the facility doesn't have a generator or fire suppression system, nor a fire alarm mass notification system. In accordance with the current building code, that is required. Again, you don't have to meet the current building code. Your existing historic courthouse is fine just the way it is, but if you were to begin to make improvements on it, then you would need to, to bring certain areas into compliance. There's no Sally Court for transportation of detainees, for, uh, movement of detainees on the campus. That could be a, a security concern. The combined circulation pass of the public, the staff, and the detainees are intermingled, which could be problematic, and provides challenges for the Sheriff's Office on a day-to-day basis in terms of moving those detainees throughout the campus. And as noted, you know, the, the detainee pass right now are currently exterior and involve elevation change, which is, again, is an obstacle if you've got a detainee who's in shackles and leg irons. Um, the Sheriff's Annex and the jail are, are in poor condition, and they require replacement, and that's been pretty much the consensus within the county and within the court stakeholders, and in terms of our review as well. Um, there's no growth in terms of county population that's anticipated. We'll look at that in just a second, and as, as a result, there's also no caseload increase that's currently expected. We did see a spike in the circuit court caseload, but we think that's an anomaly, um, due to two factors. Number one, how the Supreme Court is counting circuit court caseload, and number two, just our litigious society and where we are today. And then lastly, Scott Services is anticipating a growth, you know. We're seeing more and more, uh, prosecutorial and judicial shift toward alternative sentencing versus jail terms versus incarceration. So that, if, if any of the departments will grow in terms of, um, staffing, it's probably Scott Services and the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, because both of those work hand-in-hand. So reaching out to the Historical and Genealogical Society, we gave them a questionnaire, and we asked them basically five questions. Number one, is the preservation of the Sheriff's Annex important? And even if the, the preservation would be costly. Nine out of ten said, yes, it is important. Item number two, preservation of the jail, that's the more current jail, um, is that important? Six out of six, six point six out of ten said yes. We looked at the Confederate mob monument, and is that an important county artifact? Yes, nine out of ten agreed that it was. Preservation of the Confederate monument at its current location is somewhat important. Six out of ten said it was important. Five point eight out of ten said the relocation of the monument to an alternative site might be more... be more appropriate, such as a Confederate historical site or a cemetery. Again, that's not the focus of the study, but since we're looking at the campus and looked at other buildings, we took the opportunity to reach out to the Historical Society and get an opinion on these as well. The venomous memorial again was deemed an important county artifact, nine out of 10, and eight point six out of 10 deemed that relocation of the venomous memorial to an alternative site might be appropriate. The monument appears to be deteriorating a bit due to weather exposure. Mr. Chairman, any questions up to this point?
None.
Okay. So let's look briefly at the court caseload projections. So the upper left corner, you see the Scott County Populations Projections. This is from the University of Virginia Weldon Cooper Center. They do populations for all counties, towns, and cities throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. Your current population about 2020 was about 21,500 residents, and Weldon Cooper anticipates a slow decline in population of about overall 10% by year 2040 to about 19,740 residents. So that's what you see illustrated in the graph there on the bottom right. We then looked at caseload projections, and we did three different methodologies. The first methodology is basically linear, okay? Whatever your historical caseload population was, we track that into the future. The second methodology we used is called fixed ratio to population. So we took the average number of caseloads per thousand, commenced cases per thousand over the past 20 years, and we use that average based on your population. Well, your population here in Scott County has anticipated decrease, so all of those would decrease, okay? Because it's tracking directly your population. And the last methodology we used was what's called changing ratio to population. So you've had a fairly consistent population, as you can see by the graph on the left, of your population from 1990 to today, okay? Past 30 years. If there's any fluctuation in caseload, even though you've had a steady population, that will be amplified if you have any population change in the future, okay? You don't anticipate any population change, so therefore it would not really reflect. But if there is substantial growth historically, okay, of numbers of cases per thousand historically, then that's going to be amplified in the future, and we did see that in the circuit court. We'll start off with general district. You see the general district has had some ups and downs over the past 30 years, larger fluctuations in 2018, 2020, 2021, okay? Why was that? COVID is adding to that. Thank you. People weren't driving as much, okay? If people aren't driving, people aren't getting traffic tickets, okay? So we saw a big downturn in terms of general district court caseload in 2020. That happened throughout the Commonwealth. That's not an anomaly here in Scott County, okay? And then we saw a little uptick in 2021 as things began to return to normal, but basically a pretty flat curve there in terms of general district court caseload, and you see you're well below the line for needing a second courtroom. Jane, your caseload about the same, pretty steady, little downturn in 2020, little uptick in 2021, but relatively steady for the long term. And when we go to circuit, little higher fluctuation. Now, I'll tell you that in 2013, 2014, the Supreme Court of Virginia changed the way they calculated caseload for the circuit court. The reason they changed this, they tried to balance the caseload count for judges across the Commonwealth based on the types of cases, okay? So a property case that is not involving a jury takes a lot less time to resolve than a jury murder trial, okay? And looking at all the commenced cases across the board, one for one, the Supreme Court said that's really not fair. Too unfair for the localities who have a heavy uptick in jury trials, okay? So they changed the way they're calculating the commenced cases, and we're still trying to catch up with that balance. But we still have seen a pretty significant uptick in terms of the number of commenced cases in the circuit court, okay? There's also changing legislation as a result of the General Assembly. The General Assembly is allowing trials to now be heard by the jury but be sentenced by the judge. Well, that's obviously resulting in more jury trials, okay? I'd rather be tried by a jury of my peers than a judge, but then be sentenced by a judge because judges are typically more lenient than juries. Again, this is affecting caseloads across the Commonwealth. We do not see that this linear trend or this changing ratio trend to be what is anticipated here in Scott County. We are in agreement that the fixed ratio to population, basically tracking your population and having that line come down below the second courtroom needed, would be more of the trend we anticipated. There may be times to time, time to time, where you need two courtrooms, two circuit, but in talking with the circuit court clerk and the circuit judges, it is not going to be two jury trials at the same time. So all the space needs that we utilize would have one jury courtroom for the circuit court, and in the times when you would need a civil trial courtroom, you could use the general district court, okay? And everyone was in agreement with that. So in terms of site characteristics, the courthouse is currently in a C2 central business district and is subject to some setbacks. In addition, it's not really feasible without a variance to the setbacks. We see this as just a regulatory issue that could be resolved as any project might move forward. I was talking with Chairman Mann before the meeting. Obviously, regulation has become more and more the calling card of local development throughout the Commonwealth. Again, that's not unique to Scott County, but that would something that we need to be aware of as we move any project forward. There is significant site slope across your site. That's probably not something that you're not aware of already. You have a significant amount of topography in Scott County in general, okay? And that's one of the blessings and the beauties of Scott County. But that is a challenge when you're trying to build a building, obviously. Because of the proposed development is less than one acre, it's not anticipated that we're going to need Virginia stormwater management plan, construction general permit, okay? If the proposed expansion will be served by natural gas, we'll need to consult with the provider, and the town of Gate City will be needed. But lastly, any addition or new construction may require micro piles or pure foundations, and we can talk about that moving forward. Once again, a geotechnical investigation was not included. So until we do a geotechnical investigation, we don't know if enhanced foundations, micro piles, or alternatives would be needed. It's found to be needed in many areas of car formation, geology, and that's why we made mention of it. The site offers limited space for construction staging. Obviously, you're already aware that the site is relatively tight because you're in downtown Gate City. If the Manuel parking lot, that's the parking lot to the west of Manuel Road, if that would be used for construction staging, you might want to think about closing Manuel Road for on a temporary basis while construction's going on to allow those construction activities to cross back and forth. Again, that's not a must, that's just a possible suggestion. And if the, we looked at the empty parking lot at East Water, it's not ideal to the distance from the site and also the steepness of the road. Lastly, we looked at this parcel here, which is a little further to the south. The parcel is really not viable because it's within the flood plain, and that would prove challenges from a cost standpoint and also a regulatory standpoint. So we do not think that that parcel would be a good alternative for a court facility at this time. The other challenges we found are accessibility, we've kind of already talked about, security concerns, lighting, fencing, lack of Sally Court, the detainee staff and public movement, having adequate space provisions, you know, we looked at that space deficiency. Stormwater, piling on walkways, that's an easily resolved item, and then we've talked about the generator already. So architecturally, in terms of moving things forward, we want to remediate some of those accessibility obstacles. We want to improve the building circulation pass. We want to improve the security screening area. If you've ever been to the courthouse, you come in immediately to the left is the x-ray machine, magnetometer. It's a relatively congested area, and there's really no room for queuing, you know, lining up inside the courthouse. So having more adequate space for that and also more adequate space for the sheriff's office to conduct their screening activities would enhance security and also provide a better experience for the citizens of the county. We want to eliminate the piling on the roof. We want to remove storage from the basement, creating additional storage elsewhere. That J and DR courtroom, excellent improvement to the facility, but it is space challenged. It's pretty tight in there. And for anyone who has ever participated in a J and DR courtroom activity, of all three courtrooms, that is the one that is the most litigious. That is the most fraught with confrontation because you're dealing with family situations, you're dealing with children, you're dealing with custody. So if any of the courtrooms need space, it's that one. Not because of the number of participants in the courtroom, because it has the least, but because of the confrontations that result in those courtrooms. And we also want to make improvements to the circuit and general district as well, bring them up technologically as well as furnishings. The building appears to be structurally sound. It's very well maintained, it was very well constructed originally. Mechanically, it needs some improvement. It doesn't have ventilation air. Some of the outdated systems mechanically need to be replaced. Electrically, it could stand for an improvement in terms of its efficiency. You know, LED lighting is sort of the standard now for any improvements, and the payback is coming less and less. We're looking at about two to three years now on a payback on a LED lighting replacement. As soon as you have to replace one bulb on an incandescent or a fluorescent system, you've already offset the LED cost, if that makes sense. Fire alarm system and the mass notification system, we've talked about that previously. We've talked about adding toilet fixtures and a fire suppression system. The sheriff's annex, which is the building immediately to the north of the courthouse, it's been partially demolished already. It may contain hazardous materials, as our study did not include a hazardous materials assessment, like asbestos, lead paint, DCBs, things of that nature. That needs to be looked at. The renovation cost is likely to cost much more than demolition and reconstruction. So although the Historical Society said it would be viable to retain this building, our recommendation is it should be demolished. But it would make sense to retain those large stones, and they could be perhaps utilized in future county projects. We have, we transform the bill. The, what I'll call the current jail, this jail is really not an acceptable holding facility. It's not really being used as a jail anymore, as you know, but it is used as a temporary holding facility to support the courthouse. The building systems are outdated, they require replacement, the security systems are outdated. The building appears to be structurally sound, so there's no structural issues at all. A portion of the building is obviously occupied for those holding functions, and then another portion is occupied by Scott Services. There is no direct connection to the courthouse, so any circulation of detainees has to be done on the exterior, which could provide security obstacles for the sheriff's office. Again, we recommend demolition, and this is in consequence input from the county and the court stakeholders as well. With regard to the chambers, this is the building immediately to the right of the courthouse right on Jackson. The electrical system is a little outdated. If we do, would do some renovations, we recommend replacing that. The mechanical system lacks renovation. Again, the building appears to be structurally sound. If there would be an opportunity to uncover and restore some of the historic features, that would be our recommendation. The building doesn't need to have fire suppression, but most commercial buildings obviously do, and since it's turned into a commercial building function, that might be a thought the county would have moving forward. We recommend preservation of this facility. So now we're going to look at some options, okay? And we looked at some options with you previously. We revised those, repackaged them, and we have five for you to look at this morning. So the first one, option A, is limited to just the courthouse block itself, okay? That's the historic courthouse, sheriff's annex, the jail, and the courthouse annex or the judge's chamber. And this would be, this option would involve demolishing the jail, demolishing the sheriff's annex, renovating the courthouse, renovating the judge's chambers, constructing a 30, almost 33,000 square foot addition. The Scott Services would take over the judge's chambers, and we would provide a secure parking lot. The circuit courtroom remains in its current location under this option. Let me go back to this slide. So this is the first floor. You see Scott Services there in the pink. The circuit court is in the light yellow, and the circuit court clerk's office is in the dark yellow. See a new parking lot there on the right, that's the east side of the building. And the very bright yellow in the bottom left corner, that's the sheriff's office security. Second floor would be Commonwealth's Attorney in the light blue. It's the general district court there in the purple. And the third floor rounds out the rest of the occupants. J and DR, J and DR clerk. So option B, again, limited just to the courthouse block. We're going to again demolish the jail and the sheriff's annex. We're going to renovate the historic courthouse, renovate the judge's chambers. We're going to construct a 33,000 square foot three-story addition. Scott Services would again take over the judge's chambers, and the general district court under this option would take over the circuit courtroom. CSU is not located within this expansion, so we still need to find space for that. So this would be the first floor. Again, you see the courthouse security screen on the left, bottom left. That's the, basically where it is now, it's just expanded. Scott Services is in the judge's chambers building, the general district. Court is in the existing circuit courtroom where it is today, and the general district clerk is in the bottom right-hand corner of the plan. J and DR court is on the top of the plan in the gold. Moving to the second floor, that's Commonwealth's Attorney in the upper left, Scott Services in the bottom left, circuit court clerk in the upper right, and the circuit courtroom, circuit court space supporting that on the third. So option C begins to move across the street. So these are, the C and D are both on the, majority of the construction is on the parcel immediately to the east of Manuel Road, that's the existing parking lot. This is the most expensive option because we're expanding the courthouse with a new court building. We're going to again demolish the jail and the sheriff's annex because we need to replace the parking that we would demolish or remove as a result of a new court facility. We would renovate the courthouse, we would renovate the judge's chambers, and construct a new 47,000 six-story courthouse. This would have space for all users, including the court services unit and adult probation. And the general district court would stay where it is in the historic courthouse in the circuit courtroom. So this basically becomes the general district courthouse, historic courthouse. We have parking behind it, small addition to the west for the Sally Court, the sheriff's office, and Scott Services would be on the second floor. This is on the Manuel site now. Jackson's on the left, so the left is actually south on this plan. So that bottom level would only be the entry point. This would only be screening. This would be a parking deck on level two, maybe no public access on this level. Level three would be general district court and clerk. Level four would be Commonwealth's Attorney. Five is the circuit court clerk, and level six is the circuit courtroom. So option D includes again the Manuel parking lot site. It would demolish the jail and the sheriff's annex, again, to use for parking area. We would construct a five-story district courthouse. So this courthouse would be used by the general district and J and DR. We provide, again, provide space for all users, including the court services unit and adult probation, and the circuit court would maintain as the existing courtroom, and the circuit court clerk would remain in the courthouse as well. So we may make some improvements behind the existing judge's chambers. We still leave that as an open-air corridor there. This would be the circuit court and the circuit court clerk in this building, as well as Scott Services. Scott Services would have an exterior entry from the west side of the building. This would be the new five-story district courthouse. First level again would just be the entry point, security screen. Second level would be a smaller secured parking area. Then the general district courtroom on the third floor, Commonwealth's Attorney on the fourth, J and DR on the fifth. Which brings us to our last option, option E, okay? This is the lowest cost option, okay? This is the lowest cost option, okay? It's the lowest cost, number one, because we're staying on the existing court campus. Number two, we're leaving a lot of folks where they are today, so the circuit court would stay in the circuit courtroom. The circuit court clerk's office would stay in the circuit court clerk's current office, and would expand from there. So by maximizing those opportunities, we would reduce the cost. But we're still going to put an additional in the back of the building to accommodate those additional space needs, and that's about thirty-three thousand per foot addition. The CSU and the adult probation are included in the solution, and there'd be a secure parking lot for the judges. So first floor, again, security screen for the sheriff's office is on the left. Judges' chambers would remain, judges' chambers, circuit court clerk is in the kind of pale yellow on the bottom right. Scott Services would be in the middle of the plan on the west side, and the general district courtroom is going to be on the first floor in the expansion. J and D R court would be on the second floor in the expansion. And you see the rounding out of the different court clerk's, court clerk's offices throughout the courthouse. We'd have a secure Sally Court there on the second floor, and then the Commonwealth Attorney would be on the third floor of the expansion. So at our last meeting in March, the board of supervisors was asked, well, Tony, is there a phased approach that we can take to this? Certainly there is, okay? You can cut it up into as many pieces as is affordable to the county. Obviously, continuing to renovate in the existing courthouse is not going to get you any more square footage unless you start to remove current occupants of the courthouse and renovate behind them, okay? And that would only provide, obviously, space for those who are remaining. Those who are removed from the courthouse, obviously, you're going to have to broaden the space either by construction or by leases. But one easy way to phase it is you build an expansion, and that's your first phase. And you move into that expansion, and you use the unrenovated area of your existing building as best you can until there's an opportunity to renovate that. And things which might precipitate that renovation would be an HVAC system issue, okay? Something that would say, hey, we now need to do something. But first step is getting some more square footage, so you have a little more elbow room and can have better movement in the courthouse, more secure circulation. Obviously, you know, with any phased project, we're not showing this in our estimates, but with any phasing of projects, you're going to encounter a twofold increase in cost, okay? The first is obvious. If you do something today and then do that same activity five years from now, it's going to cost more due to escalation, okay? For any of those who are working in construction now, you're seeing the effects of that, okay? Supply chain issues are escalating cost. That's not uncommon here in Scott County, any different than it is throughout the Commonwealth, throughout our nation. The second factor is if you do small activities one at a time versus one large activity, you get economies of scale by doing it all at once, by slicing it into many different, like be asking them to paint your house, okay? If you say, come paint my whole house, you're going to get one price. If you say, come paint my house one room a month for the next year, that's going to be an increased price, because he, that painter has to keep mobilizing each time to come provide services to you. Nothing different in a construction project, okay? So phasing is definitely a way to accomplish and make it more affordable, but it's going to increase the cost somewhat. The average cost of the design options was about thirty-one point seven million all-in, okay? And there's about a nine point six million, million-dollar difference between E and C, the least expensive one and the most expensive one. We looked at different design options for A, B, and E. Phase one, again, would be the demolition, the parking, the construction of the addition, and phase two would be the renovation. And the same thing with C and D. Phase one would be the, the new building across Mandeville. Phase two would be the renovation of the historic courthouse. So in terms of the, the numbers that we use in terms of developing our estimates, we looked at a high, we looked at a low, those are per square foot costs, and then we use the average between the two in terms of developing our total project cost and estimates. So, you know, while I just look at the historic courthouse renovation cost. Obviously, working in a historic courthouse renovation while it's operating, I would say all of these projects would, are assuming that you're going to maintain occupancy of your existing courthouse while it's going on. We're not assuming you're going to move somewhere else, we're going to do the work, and then you're going to come back. So that's going to escalate cost, obviously. But that's about three ninety-five per square foot to four ten, so we use four oh two fifty for that renovation of the historic courthouse. I won't run through all the numbers. You see the escalation we used. Obviously, it's very high in the short term and decreases per year as time goes on, but we are seeing some significant escalations here in the, in the short term. So these, this is how we broke down the cost, and you'll see that in the report in its entirety. We have one of these breakdowns for every one of the different options. We looked at the addition areas, we looked at the minimal renovation areas, we looked at the heavy renovation areas. There's been that, minimal renovation is paint and carpet. You know, the space will basically remain intact as it is, like the courtroom, but if we start to reconfigure walls, doors, systems, that becomes heavy renovation. And then obviously with any demolition, that carries cost as well, and that's associated with the sheriff's annex and that existing jail. You have a breakdown like this, this is the option A budget, so you'll have a cost at the top for the construction, okay? That's the building cost and the site work cost. Then you have all of the other soft costs, okay? And obviously, all of these things are not set in stone. I'm not a contractor, we're not bidding on the project today, okay? All of these things can be adjusted and modified as we move things forward, but we need a document for planning, right? We need a document that we can begin to craft our CIP if we so desire. So we've put everything in here that we could think of that is reasonable to assume for a courthouse project moving forward, and give you some things to help plan your project. So furniture allowance, geotechnical study, cost of services. Obviously, you don't have any land acquisition, so that's not included. And then at the very bottom, we have a summary of project contingency. We run that, we recommend that at about ten percent, and then total twenty, twenty-two dollar cost, and then we escalated it, the price that we're costing in five years, ten years, and twenty years down the road. So you have that for all, that breakdown. I'm not going to run through all those numbers today. This is a comparison, so full contract means the total project cost in twenty, twenty-two dollars for each of the, of the five options. So we range and cost from the twenty-seven million to the thirty-six million, and then the phase one is just the initial build, whether that's the expansion or the new building, and then the phase two is the renovation of the historic courthouse. And the relative cost is relative to the entirety, that is the highest cost. So obviously, option C is a hundred percent, whereas option E is seventy-four percent of that option C cost. So lastly, schedule. So, you know, if you would decide, let's go, let's move this as quickly as we can forward. If we would start moving things forward here in June, okay? County funds the project by October, I understand is probably not in your CIP for next year, FYI, twenty twenty-three, but you, obviously, you can move these dates based on any timeframe you would want to and just adjust accordingly. You would hire an architectural firm on or about January, three months after that, notice proceed for design. Three months after that, you would complete schematic design, that's sort of the initial phase. It takes the concepts that we've given you and develop them a little further. You basically see every space at that point. Design development would be September, three months after that, and then four months after that, you complete construction documents. Obviously, you would advertise for bids, receive bids, notice proceed for construction, and then you've got a fairly substantial two-year construction period. Why? Because you've got to construct the new building, then renovate the existing courthouse behind it, and that's going to be a phased process as you jockey around operations with the sheriff's office, the three different courts, the Commonwealth Attorney. Got to maintain operations, right? So if you would move things forward today, June, you know, we would see about a four-year period before you moved in. And obviously, that can be adjusted. If we did a phased approach, it may be lessened by six months, a year, depending on how extensive that renovation would be. So Mr. Chairman, that concludes my formal presentation, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have. And I realize this is, these are big numbers, and I realize these are big decisions.
It is. Any comments or questions for Mr. Bell? I'll be honest with you, Tommy, this is a good report. I mean, it's, it really is, the county's done well with this, and so any comment, you all, your all's dogs.
Your first quotes, Larry, you said something about the clerk. You go out, you have two clerks now.
They petitioned the Supreme Court, the combined clerk has petitioned the Supreme Court to split the court clerks into two offices, a J and D R clerk's office and a general district clerk's office. To the best of my knowledge at this time, that has not occurred yet, but that petition has been put forward. So you need to check with the clerk's office, the combined clerk's office, as to the status and the timing of that.
And the petition came from who?
Clerk's office. That's supported by the judges, is my understanding. Mr. Chairman.
You know, right now, the county has roughly five million dollars debt that we have, and I can't imagine going, spending as much money. I mean, we do what we have to do, and I just came to life for me, see how we can afford to do. I know Ms. Lawrence, she's talked to me about some of the options we have. If there's a way to pay for it, it's going to be hard.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know what the people in the county's going to, I mean, they're, they're, I've heard a lot of stuff already about doing this. I mean, talking about quadrupling our debt, so you got to pay for it.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have done well with this, you really have, I commend you for it. Anyway, trying to apply some logic here, how we can pay for this. By the way, I got a phone call Friday from Bo Taylor. At least are you in Gay City? I said, no. And he said, I wish you were here, we got a, we got a really a mess here right now. I guess had an influx, a lot of trials happening, inmates there, room for attorney, client rooms, they have their conversation, there's no place to do any of that. Anyway, it's something we've got to deal with, at what level? I don't know.
Well, we thank you very much for the opportunity to partner with you on this.
Thank you, done a good job with it.
Anything else we can do to assist you moving forward? We're here to help. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you.
I think it's important to note that this study was, this study popped out of, or came out of reason, or the reason that we done it was because when COVID hit, and everyone wanted, needed space and spacing out and the six feet of distance and things of that nature, that's what drove this study. We paid for that with care's money, right? Is that what we did?
Some of it, yes.
Some of it. So that's what I think people need to understand is, you know, that's what, that's what, you know, everybody was concerned about being able to space out and distance out and, you know, you know, stretch out, and we ran into some space issues, obviously, which is what drove this report. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any comments from the folks?
Well, building materials are at an all-time high, and I just wonder if they'll go down in the future.
I sent a thing yesterday that has dropped, the lump had dropped.
It's dropped, it's, so it moved off.
Something we've got to do a lot of thinking about, and, you know, the folks in the county's going to be hit hard with this without a paper.
Yeah, I've already been hearing comments, and they tell me about it.
And hopefully, with the news report on it, they'll watch maybe on YouTube or watch the program and, and, you know, I'm here for the public, you know, what their thoughts are, if they can comment, and some smart people out there can say, you know, this or that, and that's too bad to hear from them, so. Anything else before we go to item left? All right. Again, thank you, Mr. Bell. Item left is Upper Cliff Mountain, Ms. Lawrence.
On your tablet, you have the documents that we need approved today for the Upper Cliff Mountain Water Project for DHCD. We have a letter for request for prior authorization to go ahead and bill for some administrative costs. We have a resolution for compliance of the Upper Cliff Mountain Water Project. We have a resolution stating that the county of Scott will resolve to appropriate four-hundred-and-forty-thousand from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development Block grant funds and five-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand from Appalachian Regional Commission funds, and that we are no way committed to spend the DHCD money unless we get the, or the ARC money unless those two grants are approved. We have a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, a fire housing certification, and local business and employment notice. This has been posted in the Kingsport Times, and then we have an EEO that will be posted in the local paper. Certification of signatures, this is standard for a CDVG project, and I just need the documents authorized and authorized my signature on those.
Can we do this in one vote? Do we need to break it out separately?
We can do it as one.
I was hoping so. All right. You heard what Ms. Lawrence has said about this, we're doing it in one vote, needs to be done, do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. You said made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tippin, a second, in discussion. All fair and proper, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion care. Next item is out of twelve, authorized joint public hearing for the comprehensive plan will be, I guess this will be with the planning commission to do this, Ms. Lawrence, if you would.
We have a VDOT study that we need to have a joint public hearing with the planning commission on. We will need to put that study into our comprehensive plan. The planning commission will be meeting at their regular appointed time before Ju-, the July Board of Supervisors meeting. So we want to have authorization to go ahead and advertise for that joint public hearing with the planning commission members on the comprehensive plan at the July Board of Supervisors meeting.
Do we have a motion to authorize this advertising, this public hearing?
So, Mr. Chairman.
Rick made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
You have a second, in discussion. All fair and proper, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion care. Item thirteen, whoever said fireworks permit, if you have a copy of it, I think you better give it to me a little bit ago. Just cross if you want to come and speak to this.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Want to make one comment here, very interesting study on the courthouse. One thing that was really concerning to me was the decline in the population in the county. And, you know, what I'm trying to do with this permit for this fireworks is, you know, we recently purchased the Old Food City building, and we're trying to renovate it, and of course we're wanting it issued also, to move our fire station and get our fire station up to a more current code. But what I'm trying, what we are trying to do right now is to bring our community and our people in the Scott County and people across the state line to come over to visit us. So we're wanting to pull on a fireworks show to bring people back into the county and to get some activity in this county. So that's kind of where we're coming from with this permit thing, you know, didn't realize we needed a permit to do the fireworks, but Sydney has been more involved in this than I have. I've just kind of been on the side of it. She called me this morning, she, she could not come, and I said, well, I'll go see what I can do. But anyway, we're working on the insurance issues. We've got one quote, our insurance that we have now, BFIS, they will not cover anything like that because of fireworks, it's not in the button. So we've got one, one quote right now, and we're trying to get another quote, which is supposed to come in today. Trying to get at least two quotes on it. It's going to be very expensive, it's okay, I think. Right now, our one quote's like seventeen hundred dollars for one day for that insurance policy, which I don't know whether the county can kind of help us with that, or the EDA can forego their liability part, what they're asking for, but we will proceed on, because I feel very strong that we need to do this and bring our community and our people together again, try to get people here. So we'll, we'll proceed on with that, but we're asking for the permit from the board to do this show. So if you guys got any questions about it, I'll try to answer them.
What is it? What is that fireworks display gonna be?
We're gonna do it on July 2nd.
Yeah, I said it right now.
Saturday, we'll do it right after our car show. We've got, we've got bouncy houses coming for kids. We've got a dunk tank for, uh, people to dunk. Various people that want to donate to be dunks. And, uh, we'll have our car show. Then we'll have some food vendors and stuff there also. We're also trying to get the restaurant open back up down there. We've got a couple people very interested in getting the restaurant open back up. So, that'll be some income for our fire department and have another business that actually wants to come in down there also. So, we're gonna have to do some little renovations for that. Of course, we're just a volunteer fire department, so we don't have a lot of money to do things, but we're working towards it. The flea market is doing very well, so that has helped us quite some. But, um, we've got a guy that's going to set the fireworks up. Basically, all we're gonna do is light the fuse. We're building tables and stuff, which is whatever they're telling us that we need to do. We're gonna do it. He's setting it all up, and then firefighters will be lighting the fuse. So, it should be probably about a twenty-minute show. So, we're just kind of hoping we can get this and let's get something going in Scott County.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Cross? With that, we entertain a motion to approve this permit, it's permitted to you. Present it to you.
Make a contingent on the insurance.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a quote. We've already got one quote, which if we don't get the other one, we're gonna go with one or the other. It's whichever one's cheaper.
Prove this on the, as our county attorney said, Ms. Kegley, contention upon them getting the insurance, insurance coverage on this. So, do we have a motion?
Oh, move.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Tiffin, second. Any discussion?
I'll bring, bring quote, emailer or something to you.
Yes, please.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome. All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried. All right, next item.
I was just thinking it should be part of the, you know.
I have some thoughts about that. It'd be here. Hey, my old bald head won't handle that. I just didn't see what it was. All right. Accounting service contract, Ms. Lawrence.
We went out to bid for, um, accounting service R F Ps. These do our financial statements to prepare for audit. We interviewed, um, two firms, two C P A firms, and selected one firm, and their contract is on your tablet. It is Hickok Brown and Company. They currently have the contract that was set to expire. And the cost for those services will be, uh, not to exceed forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars per year through fiscal year twenty twenty-six, or through twenty, yes, through twenty, twenty-two, six, and then optional for two more years.
If that chance will get it, it's on your tablet and, uh, so, any discussion before we ask for a motion? Allow, entertain a motion to, uh, allow this accounting service contract to happen. Do we have a motion? So, Mr. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tiffin, a second. Any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item fifteen is Duffield Day's request. You sent that letter out there. They didn't ask for a specific amount, but, uh, anyway, um, the numbers, some numbers are they recommended or whatever, but anyway, it's, uh, happens, Labor Day weekend. It's a, always a good thing to go to. I used to go to. It's a lot of fun. So, anyway, uh, do we have a motion on how much you want to do, to give to them, out of a contingency fund, correct, Ms. Lawrence?
That's correct. And they did ask for a thousand dollars. It's on page two.
Okay, maybe they didn't get that far.
And that is the amount that's been donated in the past years.
Do we have a motion to, uh, on this request for a thousand dollars out of a contingency fund?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Ms. Ricky, Ms. A, you made the, no, no. Ms. A, you made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Karen, second. Any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried.
Hey, Dan, going back to the Web City, they asked, maybe donate the F L A's insurance. Can we also do that?
I don't see a problem with it. We doing the others, so I don't know why we should give them something.
We're done again. We're done for Duffield. Thanks on the fire, couple Web Cities.
I'm good with, all right. I think the cost of around seventeen hundred dollars, I don't know if we'll do the whole amount or not. We did part of it or whatever you think.
I wouldn't say you're paying for their insurance. I mean, if you want to donate to them for them to use however they want to.
Yeah, we'll just make the donation. We don't stipulate what they use it for.
Yeah, it's a good point.
And who would you be donating to?
Well, the fire department, I would say.
I guess.
You have an amount that you want, how much do we have in the contingency? An aye for the Duffield Day's thing? Three thousand? I love to blindside you.
I usually have that, of course. We can, if you want to move on, I'll look. That way, I don't hold up everything.
All right. Looking back to that.
Snap to login.
Next item is footkeeping, uh, pick.
Please appropriate two thousand, seventy-five dollars and twenty cents to Sheriff's Office for parent maintenance of vehicles. Three one two zero zero dash six zero zero nine for insurance claim received deposited at Treasurer's Office. Appropriate thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents to Circuit Court Clerk, C C R P L V A grant, twenty twenty-one F Y dash thirty-nine records preservation, two one six six one dash six zero one two for reimbursement received. Appropriate five hundred and forty dollars and seventy cents to Circuit Court Clerk's Technology Trust Fund, capital outlay office equipment, two nine dash two one six five five dash eighty-one oh two for monies received, and appropriate seven hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-six cents to Rescue Services for For Life, three two three zero zero dash five six four five for monies received and deposited, and that's all the appropriations.
All right, do we have a motion on the appropriations?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tiffin made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jeter's second. Any discussion? Fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
I oppose, motion carried.
And please transfer seven hundred dollars from Board of Supervisors contingency, one one zero one zero dash fifty-eight forty to County Administrators Conferences and Training, one two one one zero dash fifty-five forty.
Do we have a motion on the transfers?
What's, uh, what's this for?
That's the item that I emailed everyone about. It's for, um, a conference that I'm attending next week.
Oh, okay.
Um, I got a scholarship for the registration fee and needed some funds for the hotel. And I did hear back from the majority that it was okay.
All right. Do we have a motion on the transfers?
Sound maybe.
Mr. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Karen, second. Any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Jeter.
That amounts fifteen hundred and one.
After, after both of these today. You do want to make a motion on this? They're all on the.
Yeah, we give them a thousand by Duffield.
Oh, yeah. All right, Ms. Jeter's made a motion that we donate a thousand dollars to the Web City Fire Department. Yeah, I'm sure they use it for help with the best event that's happening on July 2nd. Do we have a motion? You put it forward for motion, correct?
Yes.
Ms. Jeter made a motion on it. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tiffin, second. Any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Mr. Cross is led, but you can perform what we decided to do. Next item is appointments. Uh, Ms. Tena.
You have two letters, um, on your tablets, the Mountain Empire Community College. They are requesting that Keith Wilson and Fredis Darnes be reappointed to the Mountain Empire Community College Advisory Board. It's a four-year term.
All right, do we have any nominations for this, uh, the Mountain Empire Community College Advisory Board? Do we have any nominations?
I'll nominate Fredis Darnes.
Any other nominations?
Make a motion, nomination ceased, go back to nomination.
Have they had a motion, nomination ceased, go back to nomination. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Jeter, second. All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. You have two on here, that office.
It's Keith, Keith Wilson.
Oh, Keith Wilson.
It's the other one.
Okay, the other one. All right. Do we have any nomination for the second one here that, uh?
I'll nominate Mr. Wilson.
Any other nominations? Noted a motion, nomination ceased, go back to nomination. Do we have a motion?
So do.
All right, Ms. A, you made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Jeter's second. All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right, next item is County Attorney Items. Ms. Kegley.
Wanted to ask your all's authority to, uh, since you're gonna have that joint meeting with the planning commission. I've been looking at the zoning ordinance, been updating our campground definition and guidelines. And also, we need to, uh, re-adopt our G I S maps as the official zoning map, so those two, uh, amendments to the zoning ordinance could be approved at the same time. You'll have that joint meeting with them if I can have authority to advertise.
Need a motion authorized, Ms. Kegley, to advertise at this next, at that meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tiffin, a second. Any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, thank you, ma'am. County Administrator Items, uh, Ms. Lawrence.
You have your green sheets in your extra package. The available cash after claims is five million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. And on comparison, we are pretty close to where we were at the same time last year. For claims, early claims, uh, total a hundred and eight thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and ten cents. And you can see some of the larger claims this month, uh, ad code for fuel, twenty-seven thousand, fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Thirty-eight thousand, three fifty-six fifty for co-file. That's, um, will be a grant reimbursement for preservation of documents for the Circuit Court Clerk's office. Planning District One Behavioral Health Services for June, fourteen thousand, four fifty-six twenty-five. And, um, Treasurer of Virginia Tech for the third quarter payment for the extension office, fifteen thousand, eight twenty-seven twenty. So, total claims for the month, including the early claims, totaled three hundred and twenty thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty-one cents.
There's a pupil hitting you pretty hard, ma'am. You want to work out the budget?
I added some, I believe nineteen thousand dollars for fuel in the F Y twenty-three budget that we discussed last.
This year, is it going?
Yeah, we'll have some that go negative this year. Mr. Dingus, what was it you said on the packer trucks? Four miles per gallon?
Two miles.
Two miles per gallon. So, just think about that. And it's, they're diesel, of course.
Right, six days a week. Has the schools pulled down all theirs this, like, year? So, we're pretty decent shape going into the new year, uh, as or last year, so I'm glad to see that.
We don't have any, uh, large expenditures to come out. The remaining, the remaining part of the month, except for payroll, of course, at the end. But all the other, uh, large transfers have been completed at this time.
I'll back once, I've said this before, the auditor said we needed to, he likes this, to get it to five million dollars in a general fund. And so, we're doing that plus a little bit, so I'm glad we, we're doing that and, uh, so, it's, um, might operate the county in one year, ready to get a revenue anticipation, though, to get us through the, the tax season. We, we're gonna struggle a little bit, but in a way, we managed to do that. I don't think we used it, but we did do that just in case we needed it before the new taxes start coming in, in November. All right, need a motion to pay the bills?
So, move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tiffin made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Jeter, second. Any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Lawrence.
I do have a couple mislignings. Under Missalania's section, um, I need to have you make a correction to the list of names that were submitted for the Board of Equalization. I had listed, um, Jack Stallard, and that should be Jack Sanders. So, we need to make that correction.
Need a motion on the correction?
So, we.
Mr. Ricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Jeter, second. Any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And I have one other item for Board of Equalization. Uh, I need you, if it's your will, to approve for the Board of Equalization members to work groups of two. So, we would have three groups of two for the hearings.
We have to vote on that, to approve that, okay?
That will allow, um, more appointments, is the purpose of that, instead of having two groups of three.
All righty. Do we have a motion on this, as Ms. Lawrence has presented, do we have a motion?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tiffin made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Jeter, second. Any discussion? All fair and open, say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. All right. It's down item twenty. Don't take a break first. You'll go ahead and get it done.
I'll be short, I'll probably.
Break it on.
Good morning, everybody. I will be short this week, as usual.
Take your time.
I apologize for the allergies, it's snowing season up there, so it makes people cough. But, uh, starting off, keep Memorial Park, it's looking great. Did a lot of work out there, so it's in great shape. Uh, definitely, community parks probably will, in the future, need to do some work at, uh, plan to work with Scott Service. Just minor improvements, nothing big. Already been working with the parent there, it's involved a little league, just to do some small materials and equipment purchases. They've already started some work there, but just, just some small things there, so those parks are looking great. Recently completed a very successful youth basketball season, uh, as you know, COVID, we were canceled the last two years. Kids missed, I probably missed it more than them, and I forgot how much fun that was being with them. Uh, that's a big part of my job, so.
The world is small. Make or break.
Yes, we'll make or break.
It is.
I really want to thank most of our coaches. We have great people involved in this county and that program. Uh, the coaches are what makes that program. Uh, so, glad to get back to some normalcy there. Uh, coming up, we got our summer tennis or junior golf, uh, which we had it last year, so things were running smooth there. We continue to see the public users law boat access sites extensively. In my opinion, that was a great investment by the county for the public. That's just gonna continue to increase. I mean, the summer weather, you're probably gonna see it, you know, now this week, this past weekend, boats, kayaks on the river, so, um, that's really all I have on the rec side. Uh, for the golf course, I bet the last few times I've came, uh, we were running about a five or seven percent decrease off last year, which wasn't bad considering last year was our busiest and highest revenue year in, in about a decade. Uh, right now, we're at a three percent increase compared to last year, which is, I think, phenomenal. Considering last year was such a great year for us. We also need to take into account, you know, we lost some room, room, rental room revenue. You know, the, the reassessment hearings were held there, the Board of Equalization hearings have been held there. We conservatively estimate that around probably four thousand dollars. You know, that sounds like a lot, but you get forty rentals. Boom, you're there at four thousand, and that was happened during a time when we usually have a lot of rentals, so. The three percent increase, I think, is something to be proud of, of there. And I'll kind of lead into my last thing with that. Obviously, we've seen a large increase in daily play. We see a big increase in memberships, which is something we've always pushed for, but we've really pushed for recently, and I've seen that this year. We've had a lot of increasing memberships. We received a lot of comments, long time, we got people that have been here fifty, sixty years. Saying the course looks better than it ever has. First, I want to thank the staff for that. The staff is worth their tails off. Also, I want to thank the Board and Mrs. Darnes. Recently, the last three, four, or five years, we've gotten some important equip, equipment improvements. I think this made probably as big a difference as anything. Uh, the biggest one is that Jacobson A R five twenty-two mower. That's been worked, but all that is a big mower that we have the fairways with. Billy, you'll get a. we'll get a six fairway on there. It's just a different style mower than we use in the past. And to me, that's, that's number six fairway. That just looks, that's, you can really see that the fine lines. So thank you all for, for helping us get the equipment we need. I talk about new players, you know, when a new player comes, it looks like that and they come back. That's, that's important. So thank you. Lastly, I want to thank Scott Service. There's number seven. That was last year before tournament. Scott Service helps us. I've showed you all stuff they do with us, some small projects. They come up almost every tournament for us and help us get that place in tournament shape. So that's the little things they do, besides the big things they do for us. So I want to thank them. I also thank Scott Gerald. He's with the Extension Office. That's another reason I think the place looks great right now. Those are some larger drum shots. That's just the whole mountains and everything, which is really pretty. But Scott Gerald's helped us a lot. So he's always there. He tells me, have an issue, disease, or something to see, fertilizer question. Scott's right there. It's helped us a lot. So that's really all I've got. So we can get up there. Thank you for going. Good. Any questions?
Hey, okay, more shoot the vandalism, anybody cutting out seconds or anything?
I haven't spoke to Sally yet. We caught somebody. So we've caught somebody. So I almost stopped there because I don't want to. Someone was arrested.
All right, good.
So we caught somebody, not vandalism, stealing gas. But we have security measures in place that we were able to catch them. So I'll address that maybe later. That's a very new development, but vandalism, we're obviously, we got security measures in place. We look for that. The previous thing you're talking about though, probably happen again in the fall. Summertime, there's so many people in there, even, even there's so much going on that, I mean, we're always vigilant, but I think what you're referring to, we're going to be hyper vigilant in that fall winter time. But now this will be the occasion to sell gas and arrest. So that's all I'll say. Thank you all so much.
Any comments or questions?
Thank you.
All right. Well, short, you don't get it?
Yeah, thank you.
But you don't have to be short. I mean, we're, we're listening to that.
Oh, I do.
And we do. So thank you for what you do. All right, down to item twenty-one. Comment, request, recommendation for the board. Mr. Jeter, you have it?
Thank the staff for all their work.
All right.
Thank the staff also for all their work. I would want to do a shout out for, you probably have saw this on Wadovap Road. Looks like a solid bin out there. So I was curious and I stopped. And so it's like a home decor or a gift shop. And so, and actually, when I was walking out of there, I think it's called the grain bin is what it's going to be called. So when I started to leave, then I saw some of the ladies dragging out some quilts to take them inside. And I thought, well, I'll just go back inside. So I ended up getting a quilt. So it's very nice, very nice to give. So that's all.
Mr. Herring.
Appreciate what everybody does. Do we know who's going to be mowing the secondary roads this year as you contracted it out or VDOT going to be doing it?
I've contracted all that now that mow. Don't they do any of that internally anymore?
They are currently mowing US twenty-three.
Yeah, they mowed seventy-one, but the, and I think over Dunn again.
They mowed seventy-two.
Seventy-two, yeah. But the secondary roads are getting pretty bad. That's it.
Mr. Ricky.
I want to congratulate and recognize Ms. Freda Starnes for graduating from Virginia Tech with a degree certificate in public administration. I don't have a heart of just to go back to school while you're working. So that's a good job, Ms. Starnes. And also I want to ask Ms. Riley, well, she's here. I came down and looked at your road situation the day that VDOT was spoken.
Yes.
And then last month, we met with VDOT and I brought it up here to them also. And they made notes and I'm just hoping that they get to it. I guess they've not yet.
Well, they did take care of the stretch that was all holes. They came in and they took care of that. The problem that's starting to happen now, like I put in my email to you, the top portion is just disintegrating. And so now, when you go down the road, it's the washboard effect that we used to have when you had the gravel road. So, you know, I, I have a two thousand eighteen pickup truck and I have the thing that keeps rattling in my car that I know that only started when I came up here, came back up to the Virginia house. So it, it's just, it's just something that, it's just, you know, we live with, I bought that place in two thousand and three, and we live with the gravel roads and the expense that they kept putting, re-throwing gravel on. And then it goes and gets thrown off and then throwing some more down. When you consider the amount of money that it costs and the labor charge and the material and the vehicles to come out and drop everything and scrape everything, you could have had that road paved as nicely as they did with Berry Road.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just looking at, yeah, you know, it's a secondary road. I get that. But for the maintenance that it costs the county to keep it until we can, they got it where they got it now, it would, it had to be too, a lot of money going out for not.
It had to. They, they explained to us that they, that that's what they do prior to paving. So maybe they'll come along and it is, it is in their books now. They do know.
Right. Well, they said it was going to be in two thousand and three. And they said that they couldn't try to bump it up because they can't cancel a contract. But we were supposed to get that done like two years ago, what they did. And because we had a gentleman down the road who was timbering his property, they put us on hold again because of that. So, you know, him, the gentleman, I can't remember his name, saying that it couldn't be changed, the contract couldn't be changed. I don't agree with because the contract was changed because they had to do it for the, the timber. But it, it's just going to get worse before it gets better. And the base that they put on will be gone by the time they get ready to pave.
Thank you, Will, too. Ms. Who?
It was a busy month. Of course, the board had extra meetings, which made it pretty busy. And last week, I attended the ribbon cutting for a new business in Duffield Boutique two seven six, a very nice boutique. I'm sure she would appreciate anyone coming by. And last week also, I attended the fiftieth anniversary of the Duffield Fire and Rescue, which we are very thankful for our fire and rescue in Duffield. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Addington. I've got it right almost every time. How about?
You did. I'm impressed. I'm, I'm still getting used to that. So, you know, just thank all the staff. And it was a busy month. So I appreciate everybody.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Uh, don't think I have to say, I had asked about paving Big Stoner Creek Road and they didn't, they went on the dock. They said we got patch money, but not paving money. Well, they just about paved the thing, I forget whether or not. But they did a lot of patches. It's not like they did that. They did a good job on it. So anyway, thanks staff. We've had a, this is the year's coming to an end. Pretty soon, we'll have another meeting June fifteenth to, about the issues. So anyway, anything before we dismiss? Again, thanks, you know, for what you do. Have a productive meeting, I think. And Mr. Bell, thank you for coming to your presentation. Thank you, Matt.
Time is meeting.
Eight thirty. And we'll, we'll turn to June the fifteenth at eight thirty back here. Is that correct? Eight thirty, I think. Ms. Kegwell, did you see that?
I believe so.
That's why it was, it'll be eight thirty a couple of weeks. So we'll be back here. I'll be solidly, I'll turn to June fifteenth.